Given by our mayor, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
We approach the throne of grace this evening, approaching the one with all knowledge, all presence, and all power, requesting that he be with us in the process of reviewing the decisions that are to be made for the betterment of this borough. We ask for wisdom, guidance, and we are very thankful for the visitation. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started on the subcommittee reports, I have some housekeeping to do. First off, item number four and item number 13, we will be having a vote action on this, and we're going to do this after the public comments. So if the public would like to speak on these items, number four and item number 13, you can do so then. Okay, number nine, yeah, number nine's the resolution, I'm sorry. Number four is a public hearing, and number nine's the resolution. So it's nine and 13, and we also have one add-on. This is going to be 16A, which is going to be extending the contract for Fort Knox to continue collecting our delinquent trash water and sewer. And we're doing one takeoff, which is item number six. There will be no Human Relation Commission awards. Okay, subcommittee report, infrastructure. The notes, minutes are in your, are on your computers? Anyone want to add to it, or any questions? Count?
No.
Public safety, we'll report on Monday. You're going to have your meeting on Monday?
We will not be meeting this month.
Oh, you're not going to be meeting? Okay. Economic development and business liaison, anything, Erica, that you want to speak on?
I just wanted to ensure that everyone received a copy of our first issue of Momentum. Momentum is an electronic newsletter that we have started with a few community partners to tell the positive business investment in different projects that we're working on within the borough. So we have it out there, it's on many different websites. We encourage you to pass the good information along. Thank you.
With that, can anyone add to that, I mean, another civic group, or say a train company, you know, add stories?
We're looking for stories.
Transportation, council call?
Um, I have nothing.
Ricketts, Community Center, we didn't get any minutes, anything you want to add?
Yeah, nothing at this point. They're, they're, they're starting their summer programs, as I mentioned in the early reports, but nothing, nothing.
Okay, if you have anything, you can add it on Monday. There will be no school board report, and I guess we will wait to go to the two hearings. I guess we can start with number seven, presentation, stormwater management, Tom Wold. Can you do it in about 10 minutes?
I'm going to do it. If I don't, I'm in trouble.
You have to set a good example for Mr. Gask.
I'm going to try to think of other words.
I don't know who's more expensive, an engineer or an attorney.
Engineer. Engineer. Okay. Well, thank you. The discussion this evening is the stormwater discharge from small municipal separate storm source systems, better known as MS4. This program is specific for those communities that have a separate sanitary system and a separate storm source system. The program is a federal program initiated by EPA. It's administered by Commonwealth through an NPDS program, which is their permitting area. Pottstown's program, our permit is PAG 130033, and it's specific for the Matantoni Creek and the Skookel River, that, where the borough contributes stormwater to those streams. The initial permit for the MS4, we received back in March 2003, and it ran through July 31, 2013. It's basically a five-year program, but the first year, first permit program, DEP extended because they couldn't understand exactly what they wanted to do for the next permit round, so it took them five years to sort of understand what they wanted to do. As part of that initial permit, we had to part the borough past its current stormwater management plan. We now have a new permit, which supersedes the previous one, and that was from August 1, 2013, that's when it started, and it will run through July 31, 2018, unless DEP decides to extend it again. As part of the permit criteria, we have to basically adopt a new stormwater management ordinance, peel the old one and adopt a new one. Essentially, each, we think, each time a permit is issued, they will be looking for a new ordinance, which basically is going to be a little bit more restrictive than the last one, similar but not necessarily the same. Part of the NPDS permit, we have six minimum control measures. These basically are subject matters that we have to address as part of the program. Under each one of the minimum control matters, minimum control measures, which are basically MCNs is what we call them, we have six of them. The first one is public education outreach, it's on stormwater impacts. We'll come back to that one. As also, the number two is public involvement. Those one and two are associated with the public. Three is identifying illicit discharge, elimination. Four is construction, site runoff. Five is post-construction. And six is pollution prevention and good housekeeping of municipal facilities. That's the facilities that the borough owns and the borough owns. Each of those minimum control measures has VMPs. The VMPs are tasks that essentially you have to perform within the minimum control measures in order to satisfy the permit. But minimum control measure two, three, four, and five all have something, some portion of a new stormwater ordinance involved in their application. So the stormwater ordinance is really a very important item that we need to, to address. The ordinance itself, you can deal with ordinance in two ways, actually three. One of them, we don't really, doesn't apply to us because we're not in Act 167 program. You can either use the draft ordinance that the Commonwealth provides with the permit, or you can create your own ordinance, which basically requires a, starting from ground zero, but all the items of your new, your ordinance, individual ordinance, have to meet the punch list or the checklist, which is essentially all the items that are in the draft ordinance. So it's essentially, we're basically agreed that we're going to deal with the draft ordinance, and then the solicitor has modified it to be specific for Pottstown. The ordinance has eight articles. Article number one is a general provision, which just basically tells us what is happening, why it's there. Two is definitions. Three is the stormwater management standards. It basically sets up the stormwater management plan, requirements of being on-site during construction, talks about the storm erosion plan requirements, and it also identifies exceptions. Any, any development that's, it's an acre or less, this program basically defers to the borough's requirements, which is the same thing we do on stormwater and storm erosion requirements. It talks about volume control for post-construction, which is essentially when something is built, we want to make sure that the runoff from that particular site is less than or equal to before it was started. Item number four is a stormwater management plan that talks about what's involved in the plan, development and approvals, and it requires, has both plans. That's a very important item, we'll talk about in a minute. Article number five is operation and maintenance. It basically lays out the responsibility of the developers, landowners, what they have to do in regard to the borough. Operation and maintenance agreement is, is something that is required now for the signed viable land developer or the landowner with the borough to maintain the facilities over time. And then there's a performance guarantee that is required to ensure that the plan that is required for the best, the stormwater management is built correctly. Article six is fees and expenses. We're working with the solicitor to determine how that would be structured, and so the borough is able to recoup any monies that they would have to put out in order to implement the program. And then seven talks about prohibited discharges. It also gives us a list of things that can be added to the storm sewer, but essentially it talks about if it shouldn't, if it's not stormwater, they don't want it in the storm sewer system, and that has to be dealt with. Roof drains and sump pumps are something that now, you can't just take a roof drain and run it to the street. You can't take a sump pump and run it to the street, which is good, because it causes, from the authority's perspective, it's a problem, and I think from the borough's perspective, especially in the winter, it's a real problem. This is all new construction, not necessarily construction that is existing. Item number eight, article eight, is enforcement and penalties. The homeowner has a significant responsibility here. The, once a stormwater plant is installed, the owner has every annually for five years inspect, well, basically what they're saying is go out and look at it, make sure it's working, the runoff is, is effectively going where it's supposed to go, because you're not, they're not engineers, they're not construction people. So essentially, the inspection is every five years, they'll turn something into the borough, the borough takes note of it, it's done, but every three years, the borough is responsible to go out and look at it themselves. Enforcement, the borough is responsible for inspecting the stormwater management plan once it's approved, to ensure that it not only is constructed correctly, but also is being maintained correctly. Then it talks about penalties and appeals. The appendix of the ordinance is the operation and maintenance agreement. This is an agreement that pretty much lays out the responsibilities of the owner, lays out the fact that the owner allows the borough, there's access to the property to inspect the stormwater management. It also indicates that if the owner is not doing what he's supposed to do, and there's a problem, and the borough has to jump in and deal with it, the owner, the borough will be reimbursed. So there, there is that at a bill. It basically, it tells the owner, we're coming in, we're going to inspect it, and if it's not done, we're going to pay for whatever has to be done. The borough also in that agreement, it's indicated that every three years, the borough will go out and look at it. This is not necessarily an in-depth evaluation, it's a, you can walk around, make sure that what was supposed to be constructed is constructed, if it's a basin, is the basin clean, if it's not clean, you can notify the homeowner, they have to change things. That's sort of a quick overview of the program. Now, one last item is, as I mentioned, the first two minimum control measures are associated with the public, and that's important for us. Public education and outreach, and public involvement and participation. Public education and outreach, we've had available in the borough, in Borough Hall, a lot of literature over the years, since '03, for people to pick up, understand what this program's about. I think we, we have some that's outside on the second floor, and there is more information that can be provided. The EPA and DEP provides a litany of different documents that can be used for schools, for presentations, and just for general reference. Also, the borough website has a link to DEP's site, where there's more information, and also to EPA's site, where there's even more information. So we want to basically get out to the public, and you can help if you're meeting with your constituents, to let them know about this program. If they want a little more, they can contact the manager's office and work them in and get some literature. Public involvement, number two, again, it's important. We're not sure exactly how to involve the public at this point, other than awareness of storm sewer work. If somebody sees something going into a storm sewer that's not supposed to be there, call the office. We really want to make sure that the public gets involved, because that's how we're going to solve some problems. A couple of years ago, the public notified us that there was a restaurant dumping grease into a, into a storming. Mark had the sewer plant take care of it, they were able to address it, and he's over it, it's fine, and so forth. They're the kind of things that we need to really try and have the public do for us. At that point, I think I may have gone over, or close to it. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions by council?
So as far, as far as the public center, you know, the average person up there, got a runoff. If it goes to two of the lawn, is that, is that fine?
If it goes onto the lawn, it's an existing structure. If it goes onto the lawn, or if it goes into the street, this program can't stop it.
Okay.
It's the new program.
New, or building additions, or things like that?
Yes. If you're, if you're going to take a, say, a house that demolished, you're going to build something new, you're going to have to, it's less, now it's less than an acre, we're going to go with the borough program.
Okay.
If it's more than an acre, then we're going to have to go with this program, which will not allow the rainwater conductor to go out into the street, it's to go to an infiltration bed or into a vegetative bed.
And at that point in time, they're, they're, they're responsible for the five-year, three-year inspections, or something like that?
The, the, the operation and maintenance agreement stays with that property forever.
Okay.
And that's one of the things we're doing right now with codes, is trying to make sure that we remember this forever, so that the, I think that Keith is putting together programs, that we can track this over two years, three years, what are we going to do? So we're always on top of it.
So it's probably going to affect like 90% of people out there?
Not that much.
Who's not doing anything major to their homes.
Yeah. What infects us a lot are some of the illicit discharge, you know, that's a problem. Basically, what you have to do there is wait for a rain vent to stop, okay? 72 hours after a rain event, if there's an inlet that goes into a culvert, where the one of the culverts through the town, you look into it. If there's water running after a rain event, something's not right. Somebody, you know, the rain's over, either, somebody's discharged. Now, Doug has done this a couple of years ago, and we found that after about three or four days after a rain event, we were getting water in the inlet. Turned out, it was, it was a washing machine of some type from a church, or something was going in. Went back, found it, disconnected it, stopped. But that's the illicit discharges we're required to monitor.
So those are things that, that's part of existing, that you have to deal with?
That's right. We have to deal with that. New construction is, is different, not existing.
As far as, say, a home that was built on a couple acres, and they have to have a special filtration system, is, is that going to be affected if, when the person sells the homes, that going to have to be inspected, or is that going to, is nothing?
They reconstruct it, not when they sell it. I mean, I have not, I'm saying that it's a requirement if you, if you sell it.
Okay.
It's that they decide to develop it, it's a different thing.
Right. But then, if the, if the property is sold, it doesn't have anything to do with, like, being, happen to be inspected or anything like that, for, before the sale?
No. Only if they sell it and redevelop it, then it jumps into this program.
But would it become part of checklist, so that if there's a system in place that isn't working, it would have to be remediated before a UNO could be issued for that property?
That would be, if it's a new construction, yes. If it's an old construction, that would be within the borough's purview, because the borough has a responsibility with their existing program.
If there was a stormwater facility on the property that was developed, and there was a, a maintenance agreement, that would pass to the new owner.
Okay.
So the maintenance would still fall on the new owner, and again, hopefully, they would be aware of it and know that there's responsibility. But that's going to be an educational thing, and a reminder for everybody to know that they have that obligation, because it may not be readily apparent that they really have anything to maintain if it's not a big basin or something like that.
Well, I just didn't know if it was something now that's going to have to be, you know, have certain inspections in a home, you know, before your sale, and if that was part of that.
I think you're a bit of a key there, it's an educational issue. I think this whole program is an educational issue for the public. I mean, stormwater, stormwater goes in the street, worry about it, but it's, it's really coming now, it's more, more to the surface. The first, the first five years of the last permit, we got comments back from DEP that were relatively general. Now we're getting comments back from DEP that are very specific, and I just see this going further and further in the next round.
And so council's aware that ordinance will be ready for your consideration at the, at the July meeting, so this is expedited process to get the ordinance ready for your approval, so.
And this is not unique to our borough. This is, all the, all the municipalities must get these permits, and they're all under more and more scrutiny.
Township that I live in has three ordinances, three stormwater ordinances, because two of their streams, they're under the Act 167, which requires specifics, ordinance for that sub-basin, and then a general ordinance. So city fed up of, they got, they're open, everybody's.
Yeah. But along with all of this, there's not money available to do any remediation at all. It relies on the boroughs and township to whatever fixes are being mandated for us to do.
Because the permit is very specific to basically say it's the municipality's responsibility to fund this. I mean, they don't, they're not bashful, and they basically, you know, and this is, you can't, there are legal, criminal and legal issues if you are not reporting correctly, or, if you don't do something, I think initially it's the intent that you tried to do it. But if you do, if you report it incorrectly, they find out, it's no different than having a discharge, your wastewater plant that is, that you have not correctly registered. This is an NPDS permit, and it's very serious.
One other thing too, I apologize, Tom, I didn't introduce you. Tom Wold is with BCM, to our new councillors. He's the engineer for the, the authority, have been for many, many years.
Yes.
A wealth of knowledge. I just said many, many.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We're going to do the public hearing for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, the JAG grant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. This is a public hearing with respect to the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. This is a grant that the borough has applied for and received for a number of years now. It's a grant that requires no MAGE, but it also has funds available to benefit the Pottstown Police Department, and I believe this year, available to the borough is approximately $19,000. Perhaps I'd ask Captain Thomas to give just a brief overview of what the expenditures might be used to cover as part of the grant program, at least as initially recommended.
The past few years, we've used it for items to upgrade or replace worn equipment, upgrade computer systems, replace bicycles. This year, some of that is going to, again, go towards upgrading uniforms, stuff that goes to all the officers, rain gear last year, traffic vests this year, car computers. We're switching to a new vendor for the computers and the cars. We've acquired one to see if it's going to do what we want, and money from the JAG grant will be used for items like that. Things that weren't necessarily thought of when it was budget time, but that have come up and require money to be spent on before we can get it into the next budget.
Thank you. Public hearing is a prerequisite to apply for the grant, and as is typical, we typically don't get a lot of notice when the grant is, is ready to be done, which is why we'd be considering enacting a resolution this evening, following the public hearing on application for the fund. The record would stay open for 30 days for public comment, but at this point, I guess I would open it to public comment for any citizens that want to have input on the potential use of the grant funds. Is there any public comment on this item?
Sure.
Mr. Belovich, if you could just, just state your name and address for purposes of the hearing.
707 North Hanover Street. I just say, anything we can do to help the police department right now would be a good thing, and encourage investment in police force.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Does anyone else has any public comment? Hearing none, Mr. Attorney will close the public hearing. As you noted in the beginning of the meeting, item nine is the resolution to make application. The public is encouraged for the next 30 days to provide additional comment for purposes of this program, and we'll go back to the regular agenda.
Okay, number, we might as well go right into the 7:30 public hearing for the part fare increase. Erica?
Okay, Pottstown Area Rapid Transit, we have a fare policy which covers about an eight-year period. Our last fare increase was in 2012, and over the past two years, we're looking at an increase of our base fare of 20 cents. So we're looking at a base fare of 170 going to $1.90. And then our half fare program is going from 85 cents to 95 cents, which is, because that is half of our base, transfer to be then 45 cents to 55 cents, and our paratransit service would then go from $3.40 to $3.80. This is in line with inflation, other different costs that are assumed in, in providing the system, in addition to our subsidies and other things. So in addition to this, we will be updating all of our materials, transit materials, and we have notices on the buses, and providing drivers all the training needed to put this in place. This would be effective for our state fiscal year, starting July 1, 2014. So we invite public comment at this time, based on those, that increase, and we do have a sign-in sheet for anyone that is attending and they'd like to provide their information.
So this, this would be the public comment portion of the hearing, correct? If anyone has any comments with respect to the part fare proposed increase, now would be the time. Record should reflect, yes, sir.
My name is John O'Donnell. I live in Three Justice Street, where you get a bus now. I take the handicap bus, and I guess you're having increased expenses right now, right? Okay. I can understand, you know, prices, everything's going up. Are they going to change the schedules?
Not at this time.
No.
Everything will run as is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Any other public comment? And Erica, would this be a matter listed for approval in the council meeting on Monday?
That'll be fine.
President, we close the public hearing.
Any questions by council? Okay, number eight, we're up to Mr. Gask, presentation by the Covertail Project.
I know I sent an invitation to come ride the railroad, which is really the most appropriate context for a conversation about the kind of development to take place along. I wanted to reiterate that, we were hoping to have a legislative day on the second week in July, so you'll be getting an invitation soon.
We have two new councillors, so.
What's that?
We have two new councillors that.
Excellent. So we'll get you out to see the railroad, and there'll be. So we'll get you out to see the railroad, and there'll be folks from Boyertown and the state and our federal elected officials as well, who'll be there hopefully on that day. As I remember, the last time I presented before you, I had a little more hair, but hopefully they have exchanged hair for progress. And our project has been one to, as you probably know, to revitalize the 8.6-mile railroad that connects Pottstown to Boyertown, both as a connection to the national freight network and also the tourist railroad. And the project to develop the railroad as a tourist railroad arose, the concept arose from two studies. The first was a natural lands trust study that took an inventory of all of the cultural, recreational heritage assets between King of Prussia and Reading. And in the course of making that inventory, made a number of recommendations. Number one was that there was a need for an anchor attraction that would bring together many of the other attractions that were here, but would be a principal draw. Playing off of that study or following up on that study, a further study looked specifically at the Culverdale Railroad to see what the challenges and opportunities were at making an anchor attraction for this region on that 8.6-mile railroad. That study was funded in part by the boroughs of Pottstown and Boyertown. So I wanted to chat with you a little bit this evening, was really the next step in the evolution of the project. And we are in preparation, we've been doing a lot of grant writing, and we're preparing another grant, this one to the Multimodal Transportation Fund through the Commonwealth Financing Agency. They will help us develop our station areas. And being from Pottstown is particularly important to me, that station in Pottstown effectively function as that connection where the tourist passenger becomes the shopper, the biker, the hiker, someone who's visiting the community and experiencing Pottstown. And so our proposal is to put a terminal along the railroad track in Memorial Park, right in this location. This is right across from the Quality Inn. And the building that we're looking to use, which I hope you saw some photographs of the documents I handed out, is an 1887 structure that is reportedly to have been designed by the famous architect Frank Ernest. It's a Pennsylvania railroad station currently located in Berks County. And you've had the schematic in the documents that I have passed out, but I wanted to use to illustrate a particular point, this is not a railroad station serving only the railroad for the purposes of passengers getting on and off the train. This is really meant to be a point of connection and connectivity, and thus the strength of the grant application to the multimodal fund, because it's a place where we have a connection between rail and bus, rail and bicycles, rail and creek. It's also going to be an information gateway to a loop that we want to work to promote among the various educational, cultural, historic assets that Pottstown has. And it really does have a wonderful trove of those things, and a very well-definable loop to connect from Memorial Park to the downtown. And we want this station to be a hub and information gateway for that. Additionally, we're working with D C N R to conceive of this round between Pottstown and Boyertown along the Iron Soda and Mattooney Creeks that brackets the railroad as a scenic recreational corridor, a place where you can not only go for a train ride, but you can go hiking, and go biking, and go fishing, camping, kayaking, all these different ways to experience the geology, flora, and fauna, and history of a particularly important place here in Pennsylvania. You saw in, and by the way, this is just about a quarter mile north of the crossing Route 100, the Quality Inn. So for those of you who haven't seen the line, it really is quite remarkable how dramatically scenery changes along the line. So again, you're just a quarter mile north of Route 100 at this point. It's a particularly wonderful way to experience Pottstown, and the station is the entree point, once you get off the train to Pottstown. Or alternatively, if you're boarding in Pottstown, is that transition point from Pottstown into this journey into the Secret Valley. These are some of the design elements that we programmed into the project. You also have this in your packet. This is a schematic that shows where the station would go in Memorial Park. And I'm actually gonna turn over now to Roger Lehman with the Culverdale Railroad Preservation Trust to talk a little bit more about this design. And we'll both be available to answer questions, both about this particular portion of the project and the railroad general project. Is that what this is?
I don't know.
No. Let's not touch that. All right.
One of the criteria for the grant application is that we actually submit a, an engineered land development plan, not one that's necessarily approved by governing bodies, but one that's conceptually designed far enough so that it can, we can actually put real numbers to its ultimate construction, because that's what the ultimate of the grant's for, is to, is to ultimately construct it. So what we actually have shown here, in the center towards the top, is actually where the train station itself would go. The station itself is, the building is 70 feet by 20 feet in size, and then it would have six-foot-wide decks, if you will, all the way around it, so therefore you wind up at 82 feet by 32 feet. To the north, which, looking at the slide, which would be to the right, you can see it's upside down, but it says boarding platform. That's a boarding platform that actually would be constructed yet this fall to be able to be utilized for the trains that we intend to run this year, because the station won't be ready for this fall. And that boarding platform will connect to the building. Conceptually, at this point, we have shown 21 parking spaces, five of which are handicap parking spaces. The 16 parking spaces would be impervious, or pervious pavers, so as to not increase any kind of stormwater management issues down in the lower part of the park. The handicap will actually be paved because of the requirements for handicap access to them. We then have a path that meets all the ADA requirements coming from those handicap spaces up to the station, where there would be a handicap ramp to allow for access up onto the platform. The station itself and the boarding platform are both approximately four feet off the ground, so that you can walk directly from the platform into the train. It's a little difficult to see in the slide, but there's actually a brick sidewalk that would run out to the sidewalk with King Street. And then within the, within the site, there are, there's an informational kiosk, that's actually the six-sided structure that sits just to the south of the, of the station. There also is, to the east, down below the sewer pumping station along King Street, we've made provisions for a bus stop and a bus shelter for the, for the best network to pick up people and drop people off there as well. As Nathaniel had pointed out earlier, the design elements we have throughout there, the interpretive signs, we have the benches, we have the lights of, the different types of lights at different places to light both the handicap and the, in the regular parking spaces. The sidewalks are all lit, the station itself would be lit, but they're all being, all those fixtures are period-style fixtures. Does anybody have any questions of the conceptual laid-out plan?
When did you start, when did you plan on starting the train, the rides?
The goal currently is somewhere around October 1st. The beginning of October is our goal, to start providing for.
And the handicap ramps and everything will be accessible then? Or what's your timeline for that?
The goal is, we would like to have full accessibility at the Pottstown end with a boarding platform, starting in October. Now, that's the goal. This is a soft season, so October, November, December is really kind of a, it's not, it's not a grand opening, this is a, getting our feet wet and offering rides.
Working out the canes.
Working out the canes. So next year will be the first full season. And so while it's, it's part of the plan to have accessibility, Pottstown full accessibility in October, you know, it, plans may change, depending upon time, resources.
It's gonna be difficult to provide wheelchair, for instance, handicap accessibility this season because of not being able to get to, if you will, that loading platform. It's gonna be gravel. To the extent that we can get over gravel, we can make, make those provisions to get up onto the platform. And, you know, it's obvious it's a function of dollars, it's a function of the other construction that ultimately then needs to take place to the east and to the south of that platform. But our goal is to try and accommodate as many people as possible.
So you're gonna have the platform there basically alone before the building's up?
Correct. Because the building probably will not be erected and completed until in the early 2015, and that, part of that's subject to the grant, you know, the grant opportunity. I suspect that from a handicap access point, the handicap access is a lot less problematic, let's say, from the Boyertown end, so to the extent that you're, to the extent that you're wheelchair-bound, it's gonna be easier to get on in the Boyertown end. You come down, you just would not be able to get off at the Pottstown end and just go back to the Boyertown end, for the, for the first three months. How would that answer you?
I have pictures of the train station here too, if anybody's interested.
Actually, I'm a fan of a furnace, and I'm excited to have one of my structures here. I haven't got around to see it in person yet, it actually looks, actually fairly sound. How much of the original material is salvageable, or does it need a lot of work, I just curious?
Everything, other than the roof, the roof, it, right now it has asphalt chingos on it. They're gonna be removed. It'll have standing seam roof, standing seam steel, steel put back. But beyond that, everything else as you see it will be like, will be here, other than it'll be painted. Right? I don't know when it was done, but at some point in the past, somebody.
I'm sure it's some work.
So, which to me, that's great, because now there's no red paint for me to do. But it, everything as you see it is salvageable and will come, it's actually gonna come to Pottstown in a panelized fashion. We tried to move it in one piece and couldn't do that because of its size, but it's gonna come in a panelized fashion and go back up exactly as you see it.
What was the roof originally, like a steel, a tin roof?
It was a tin roof.
A tin roof, yes. So we're gonna revert back to more like what it really was. Yeah. It's, now it has an asphalt shingle. But we have to remove the asphalt roof and take apart the roof member framing, and then the walls come down and it paddles.
Are you gonna keep the one area that has the conventional roof trusses, or it's an extension that was put on? Or is it just gonna go back to the original, what the original structure was?
If you're talking about the portion on the inside where somebody started to build like an office or something like that in it, that's coming out, but it's, we're also gonna make an office and restrooms. It'll have a men's room, a ladies' room, and an office slash ticketing window in it. And that's gonna be to the northern end of the building. The northern end of the building also will have a basement area under it, which will house utilities, water heater, electrical panel, that kind of things that we would have to have. And they would be, that's gonna be right under where the office and the restrooms would be.
Can you explain to me, is a train, a train that can go both directions, or is there a turnaround procedure?
It can go both directions. In fact, what you're looking at, the darker set of, darker pair of lines near the top of the picture, is a siding track that's being reinstalled. It used to be there, we're gonna put it back in, that will allow the locomotive to run around the train, so it's always on the lead end. So they lead the train into Boyertown, they'll uncouple, run around in that passing siding, pull back up the train. We're doing this improvement for two reasons. One, the current passing tractor is that utility just further, further up the line, closer to Route 100, is too short. And additionally, if we were to use that, that would mean that we'd have to stop the train out sort of in the middle of nowhere, run the engine around and shove it back into Pottstown. Now this allows us to have coaches right at the station for a longer period of time. So the engine will always be on the lead end of the train.
You typically always wanna pull the train, you don't wanna push it. It becomes very problematic to push a train.
No, it's going reverse, the trains.
Yeah, locomotive.
Locomotive doesn't care, there is no front and back to the locomotive when you're running that way.
These ones. But our railroad's all uphill, all the way to Boyertown, and there's like no straight, no straight portion of it anywhere there, so it's all curbs and deep rock cups and tall trestles and things like that, so it's best to have the engine on the lead end going.
I tell you what, I rode the train in Jim Thorpe, PA. Beautiful to use.
The other thing, which I actually, I neglected to point out, it sort of, you reminded me when, so you said that, the other thing that we're providing for is at the rail top, and it crosses over the tracks, and you can see all the way to the, to the north side or the right side side here, there's actually an emergency access driveway, which we're installing to allow for the borough's maintenance personnel to get to the maintenance building, because it was sort of realized in that flood three weeks ago, four weeks ago now, that when the lower accessway to the maintenance building floods, there's no way for the borough personnel to get back to the maintenance building. So we've worked with the borough to provide for a emergency access driveway, which would allow for, to go ingress and egress from King Street to that maintenance building without having to cross through any kind of flood borders. If you had to get equipment in or out during an emergency or something like that, you wouldn't have to worry about access. But that driveway crosses over that new track, but it's only for borough uses, you know, other than that.
Where's that, where's that old racing basketball court?
The basketball, here's the basketball court, it's actually upside down. See, it says basketball court?
Okay.
So this is the basketball court. This is where the emergency road comes in, because the right, here's the maintenance, here's the maintenance building.
Okay.
And that comes into the high point and goes out all the way over here to King Street.
My work has been almost exclusively focused for the past couple of months on preparing for this grant application. And one of the requirements to the grant application is a letter of support from the borough. And so part of timeliness of my presentation to you this evening is, it's been, one, much too long since I've come and presented to you, and two, that I need to prepare this document to submit June 20th. So I'm hoping to seek a letter of support from the borough council for this project. And also, as I mentioned, Erica, we also need to provide a list of all the permits and approvals that we'll need from the, from the borough as a part of the project. So. If there's any questions, certainly be glad to.
You mentioned about freight. Do you have any, I know you said you didn't at the time, it was just something that came up.
Right.
Is there anything in the works for that, or you don't know, or?
There's always freight in the works. We're constantly being approached by folks that are looking to potentially haul freight in our railroad, and we're at the same time also approaching other folks that we know are bringing commodities into the area using highways and saying, you know, this is probably, this may be a better option for you to take traffic off the highways and have on-demand service. That's how we got the freight customer that we had in the beginning of the year. We knew they were gonna be seasonal, and they, they used our railroad for the first few months of the year as they intended to, and then, you know, once that job is done, they promised they might, they would be back if they had traffic later on in the year. So we've got four or five other potential freight shippers that are currently working with Norfolk Southern, which is really the bottleneck with respect to sending freight to us. We are handling carrier for Norfolk Southern, so the deal has to work for Norfolk Southern before it works for us.
Now, as far as the rail, the track itself, how far does it go past Boyertown? I mean, is it end somewhere up there, or is there a spur somewhere that it can go off?
Right. The track ends at Reading Avenue in Boyertown, so if you're familiar with the bridge that says Y M C A across the top of it, that's the end of our track. Originally, the track went an additional four miles to Bartow. It was cut back over time in segments until its current end of track in the 1980s.
I think it went parallel to Route 100, I kinda think.
It did originally, yeah.
Yeah, originally, yeah. I just didn't know if there was any spurs off of that, like there's spurs like up and down High Street, you know, off of the Norfolk Southern.
We have a number of sidings that do come off of our track, and that's where we have traditionally done transloading, so that's where we can do transloading still. In fact, we recently finished restoring a 600-foot-long siding in Culverdale Township that goes downhill Culverdale Foundry. When you come out to ride in July, you can actually see the fruits of that labor, it's pretty remarkable, a handle-laid track, looks just like it would have looked in 1869 when they put it down, and it was all done by volunteer labor. So we're very proud of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So for our Monday eating, we will have listed for a letter of support, and Erica will be able to get the other permit fees and items added.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, one item that I forgot to mention was on Friday for economic development, there was a grand opening of the Manitoni Still Works up in Circle Progress, across the street from the Sly Fox. And one of the owners of the Manitoni Still Works is Jeff Vaughn, and his grandfather actually owned the Vaughn Knitting Mills here in Pottstown. And it's come full circle, he said, you know, in fact, he still has a lot of the real films and all kinds of memorabilia from his grandfather that he's gonna be talking to the Historical Society that hopefully can find a home and so forth. But it's quite neat that, you know, he remembered his grandfather talking about Pottstown, and here he is, back in Pottstown. And the name Manitoni Still Works, as. And the name Manitoni Stillworks, as Mr. Williams, is he still here yet? Place we meet to drink. Now, I don't know if they were talking about alcohol, but, or spirits, but the
Water, water.
The name is still there, and it's a, it's a neat operation, so if anyone, I know Carol was there to see the grand opening. It's quite amazing. I mean, the distill inside, I think he said over a half million dollars. That's a lot of distilling of alcohol and so forth. And they're, like I said, they're pleased to be right aside of Sly Fox. Sly Fox, in fact, one of the owners is also a partner in the, the Manitoni Stillworks. So it's, that Circle Progress is certainly changing up there and for the really good. So it's, seems neat to see cars up there and, you know, viable businesses. And right there too, the Hagerty Steel is being built, so when you go up, you can see that. Lot going on up there. Okay, we're up to number 10, the base sewer fees.
No, I'll take that. This is actually a recommendation from the borough authority, and it really has nothing to do with, with changing any fees, but the authority in, in 2011 established a resolution and a policy whereby residents could actually disconnect to the public water, and if they did physically disconnect, they wouldn't have to pay the base water fee. The authority has suggested the borough consider similar language or wording for sewer and trash fees with respect to this, to make sure it's very clear in the ordinance when you can charge base fees for water and base fees for sewer. So the request is that you allow staff to prepare ordinance amendments to our sewer ordinance, so the, the language mirrors the water resolution prepared by the authority. I think for purposes of enforcement, the authority would like to see language being identical, so it's very clear when the charges can be billed as a base charge and when they can't. So with your permission, again, you're not adopting anything even next month, but you'll see the draft language come through in a proposed ordinance. So if there's any questions, we can talk about them at that time. I believe that's the impetus of the change.
Absolutely. Any questions? So Monday evening, there'll be no action on this, just that it's coming out in the future.
Yeah, you don't even need to authorize it, we'll just prepare it so we can discuss it next month.
Okay, number nine, I skipped over that. Do you want to do that now, explanation, or do you want to wait till the end of the?
I think we could wait till after public comment and we can do number nine.
And 13.
And 13 at that time.
Okay, number 11, Olivet Boys and Girls Club lease extension?
Yes, if you recall, I believe it was in November of last year, we extended the lease with the Olivet Boys and Girls Club at the Rickett Center for a six-month time period. We were hoping within that six months, we'd have the final new agreement prepared. We're running slightly behind schedule. We're meeting with the Olivets later, I believe, next week to review a final draft lease agreement. So we would ask if council would consider extending the present lease another 30 days, Mark, or 60?
I believe we said 60.
60 days, to give us sufficient time for the new lease agreement. So it would basically be a 60-month, or 60-day extension, running till the end of August.
Any questions? Okay, number 12, the Plum Street land development. This is, I guess, a finalization of some issues that was approved by the Planning Commission and passed on to council.
Right, more, more of a housekeeping item. Maybe a lot of councils don't even remember, the Plum Street project was approved and built a number of years ago, and by anybody's standard, it's pretty much completed. But when a final inspection was done earlier this year, there were some very few minor items that were not exactly constructed as the approved plan. Some of them included a tree placed in the wrong location, I think because of some placement of utilities, it varied two parking spaces slightly from what the plan said. And perhaps most importantly was the issue of a landscape or a buffer along a property line that wasn't for the plan. I think a fence was installed and the actual plan called for fencing and some landscaping. So the Planning Commission looked at this and talked to the developer for a number of meetings, and we actually, the Planning Commission actually received information from the neighboring property owner who's affected by the, the property buffer, who's indicated to the borough that he's satisfied with exactly what's constructed there and doesn't want anything to change as far as that buffer. I believe, and I don't want to speak, but Dan and Steve, Planning Commission basically approved the slightly revised parking, the lights that were missing were to be installed, the, the property line buffer will stay as is, and the tree in the other location was fine, so those were the issues. So really, it's just council approving the minor changes to the approved plan, but I would call it nothing of, of real substance at this point, other than to wrap the project up. So we're asking for your approval of those items for Monday night.
Any questions? Okay, 13, we'll be skipping over. Back to it, traffic patterns, what's Walnut Street in front of the Barks Elementary School?
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. In early May, I received a letter from the principal at Barks Elementary School, Ryan Oxenford. Ryan identified an issue with the current traffic pattern in front of Barks Elementary School. Additionally, he had been in contact with the police department, proposed a concept, spoke with Chief Drumheller, and they were on board with the concept, and asked Ryan to come to the meeting this evening to explain what the problem is and the proposed solution. You should all have in front of you also, I think Jenny passed out a copy of the letter from Ryan with some images to explain.
I feel underprepared that I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, so I apologize. If you actually look, I tried to do the best I could to put this into perspective instead of a long-winded explanation. I think it's better to see some pictures. On the third page, essentially, just to get a basis for my conversation right now, in the lower right-hand corner of the picture, there's an area that's reserved for three buses and nine vans at student dismissal. We have just shy 400 students that we dismiss between five of three and five after three. So it's a, get a lot of students to where they need to be very quickly. The problem is that that street is exactly three lanes wide, and the residents on the opposite side of the street park along that street, which should stay in place because they do not have parking elsewhere. And then when the buses and the vans park in front of the school, which is pretty much the only place to pick up students, it creates one little, what I call a chute. And between Hemlock Street and Ryan Street, where there's a stop sign, the cars coming from Burke Street, because of limited view of the, from the buses and the vans, will enter into the chute. And then essentially, you come to an impasse in that one-lane section that still exists. So if you actually go back to the second page, it has zoomed out view, and I'm proposing, or at least asking for consideration to make West Walnut Street a one-way street up to and including Myrtle Street. The reason being, I recognize that there's a learning curve whenever you convert a two-way street to a one-way street. So for the residents or any person traveling on Glasgow Street, turning onto West Walnut Street, if it was immediately a one-way street, I could see the potential for a problem. However, my suggestion, and this is obviously up for interpretation, would be to maintain that section of the street as a two-way street, and then once you get to Myrtle Street, it then converts to a one-way street. So what happens is, you essentially have on the Barks Elementary School side of the road, vans, buses, and even parents can pick up, allowing the children to enter from the passenger side of, of the car, and then right back out into the lane to continue to move on. All, constant flow of traffic versus when you have opposing traffic, trying to find a spot for cars to yield to is next to impossible. I have every staff member in that building on site during their duties, and everyone's out there, and it's a stressful time of day, because unfortunately, not everyone uses common sense when they're traveling down that road and they recognize that it's supposed to be a 15 mile an hour speed zone, and people don't always adhere to that. So just looking to find a way to make it safer and smoother for the students, and we've had a couple really close calls, and it's, it's to the point that it's worthy of a conversation, consideration.
For council's information, I know in the past, there's been concern about neighborhood or the neighbor perspective from this. If I'm correct, Captain Thomas, the police department has so far pulled half of the neighbors?
That's correct.
And got no objections, and the intent is to hopefully get the other half done, so that you have an answer Monday night whether the neighborhood approves of it. And I believe you're also, the concept increases available off-street parking, on-street parking as a result.
Yeah, I mean, you actually maintain your parking spaces, except you'll be facing the opposite direction, so it does smooth it out a lot.
So the council is so desired to allow the solicitor to move forward with that modification to the ordinance?
It seems like the only people they would majorly affect is the ones along the, the residents between Ryan and Hemlock. There was 12, it was like 12 thousand here?
Correct.
Those were the ones outside of eight?
Yeah, I think, I believe you said it was 18?
About 18?
I was told it was 16 and it's 18, wasn't it?
Okay. Approximately how many of your children are picked up by parents?
About half. We, we have about 185 students who are bused, and then initial probably, give or take 50 or 60 who go on vans, and so a huge majority of the students who are picked up or ride a bus come from the western part of town, so they're essentially coming from Burke Street. So they're coming from that direction.
So that would be about 200 kids?
Yes.
And how many are bus riders, van riders?
185 students are on the bus, and then, give or take, probably about 50 students on one lane.
And you have 400 students?
Just shy of 400.
Is there any kids that walk to this school?
Yes, there are, so.
How many?
There are some. Give or take, I'd say 90. So there are a fair amount of students who walk. And we do have crossing guards at the intersection of West Walnut Street and Ryan Street, and these students who are walking or by themselves always adhere to the crossing guard. Fortunately, sometimes when parents are parking on the opposite side of the road, they cross where it's closest to their.
I was just referring back to previous comments that our schools are walkable, you know, so, not by you, just by someone else.
There you have it.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, thank you. So we will be voting on that Monday evening, I guess, or we, do you think you will have the resident's answers by Monday evening?
Yeah, I think if you parent advertise, you can choose.
And that'll take probably till next, what, a month or so?
A goal is by the next school year.
September.
Right.
Okay. Warnet signs weight restrictions on bridges.
Yes, this is a, another potential change to the traffic ordinance. We received some information with respect to the railroad bridges at the South Washington and South Franklin Streets, being posted for certain tonnage limitations, and we want approval from council to amend the ordinance, so the appropriate tonnages are listed as restrictions in the ordinance, so it can be enforced.
Any questions? Okay, Carousel Flavor, September 14th, 2014, they're asking for the street to be closed, I guess, from Annover to York?
Inner Street to York Street from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
And then having a beer and wine gorge.
Permission from council to, again, put their wine garden. Subject to approval by the liquor control board.
And our staff.
And our fire chief and our police department.
Any questions on this? Okay, we'll have it listed. Okay, going back to now number nine, the resolution for the JAG grant application. Oops, I'm sorry. Portonoff first, we'll do that one. This is to extend a contract for Portonoff to collect delinquent trash water and sewer.
Currently, the, the agreement expires on June 30th of this year. We would ask council, we've spoken in finance, our finance department is pleased with the services Portonoff is providing in regard to utilities collection, and with that said, we would ask that you consider extending the contract.
And we'll be asking for a quote for three years?
That's, that's in regards to the audit, yes.
Oh, to the audit, okay. This is just an extension?
This is just an extension for Portonoff.
For Portonoff.
In regards to the utilities.
Okay, that'll be listed. Typically, it's a one-year extension.
Yeah.
We got the two mixed up, one was the auditors and one is flexibilities.
This is a one-year. Correct.
Okay, now we're up to, back to number nine, resolution for the JAG grant application.
I certainly can, the, there's a resolution required in order to move forward, a memorandum of understanding for the justice grant that you had the public hearing for earlier, it's a memorandum of understanding to work with the borough, excuse me, the municipality of Norristown. The municipality of Norristown will be the actual recipient of the money, they will manage the money and reimburse us. This is the way we've been doing it for the past eight years, I believe. It's worked quite well. There's no fees involved for them to handle the money, it's, it's a clear, clear pass of the money, and there's no, no cost for us up front.
Okay, before we vote on that though, I want to cover the next item, which is the grass cutting bid award, and then we'll open it up with comments from the citizens present, and then we'll vote on it.
Doug, do you want to comment on the grass cutting?
Yeah, this is an additional set of work. We were requested to supplement our present contract with additional locations due to Cleanleene's ability to get to all the sites. We have over 62 sites listed in this additional work. It's a combination of borough properties and street right-of-ways, whether it be a traffic island or down like industrial highway along the guardrails. So it's just, some of the work is, is just, it's small work, but it's time-consuming to get to. So this is just additional work to see whether we can give some relief to the Cleanleene group.
The two companies bid, Green Advantage and 82 Rents, and on both categories of the bid, Green Advantage came in the lowest.
I guess my question would be, where's the money coming from to pay for this? Is this budgeted or?
Keith?
It's, it is coming out of the end. At, it's kind of like a $100 right now.
The end of the day, it is money that we have appropriated for 2014 budget, and it's no additional expense on the borough.
Okay. All right, I'm going to now open it up for comments from citizens present, and we will vote on those two items.
Is there anyone that wants to sign?
You can always print them up with your name on them.
I waited.
Ms. Crum?
Okay. I'm dating from North Hanover Street. I waited to the end because I wanted to see whether Madam Mayor or the President brought this up. We had another shooting yesterday in the borough. We had shots over by Brian's Cafe last week or the week before. We had gunshot, or gunshots reported up by Wilson Street, I think it was. We've had them by Lincoln Avenue. I can tell you it's laying in bed at night, I've heard what I believe is bullet shot. I want something done about crime. We have to be proactive, not reactive to this crime. People know that Pottstown, we had the bank robbery. People know that Pottstown, we had the bank robbery. We're becoming like an easy spot. We have to do something. The railroad is a wonderful thing. The Carousel Flavor is wonderful. All these things are wonderful, but nobody wants to come into Pottstown if repetitively there is this violence crime. You even had a woman knifed or shot right here on the one-hundred block someplace a couple of months ago. Pottstown is becoming another Chester, PA, and we can't, we need something done. Chief Drumheller has said that it has to take time. I think the time is running out. We have to do something now. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Turney. Okay, could I have a motion for the resolution for the JAG grant application?
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. End of discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Could I have a motion to award the grass-cutting to?
Green Advantage.
Green Advantage Landscaping.
Still moved.
Subject to review by the solicitor. Been moved, and you seconded. Okay, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Counselors, general discussion. We'll start over here with Counselor Crossbow.
I was planning on making these comments anyway, but I certainly agree with Mr. Crum, particularly when some of the most violent incidents were just a couple of houses away from me, and the Pottstown PD is doing the best they can.
And some of these, too, are ongoing investigations that we're not at liberty to discuss, so. Okay. Counselor Cole? Counselor Miller?
The Saturday is next third ward meeting. We're combining it this month with Ward Seven, so it's going to be at Smith Family Plaza at eleven a.m. to twelve-thirty p.m., and we hope to see you there.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Now? Okay. As far as the crime issue, you know, you could say a lot about the psychology of crime in a criminal, but the point is, nobody wants crime or violence in their backyard. Nobody. I mean, I'm sure, even on the other day, after all of the scene was cleared at the last incident, I did revisit the scene and talked to some individuals that were there in a buffering capacity, and was able to talk to some other individuals that were present in, in a tone that would allude that, you know, it's difficult to command people's behavior, but it is not beyond the scope of what I feel this post affords me to do to suggest appropriate behaviors for peace in the street. Now, can you make a global statement to say one comment to five or six people a day is going to make a difference? You can surely hope that in some instances, it can. But to reverse the whole psychology that creates crime in a person with a criminal mindset is outside of the scope of the police and the council. But to say, to put in place measures that improve the quality of life, because a lot of these things track with poverty. So where there's poverty and joblessness and hopelessness, you have desperation, and therefore, you have reactivity. So, and a lot of it is very random, and that's very unfortunate, especially at three-twenty in the afternoon, when children are walking all around. So, you know, where do we go from here? We have to continue to understand that we have to back our police force, and they do take a tough position on crime. But police work, per se, is reactive, but the part the community has to play is where the proactive facet is. It's not with the police department in total, because their work and the scope of their job is to enforce the law and to react to crime that does occur. So, you know, there is the community response unit, and there are the forums that go on, and there are, not just me, but plenty of individuals out there that are promoting safety, because safety is common sense. So, you know, don't, don't feel, you know, if we give power to evil, then it has a capacity to overtake. So we, as the people, have capacity to evoke the good and see the better, and I really believe that.
Thank you for those words. Counselor Wean?
No comment.
Counselor Gary?
I have a couple of things, and one, I just want, for those of you that had the opportunity to attend the Memorial Day services out at Memorial Park, I just want to, you know, mention Corporal Tim Donnelly, who was the young man that spoke to those of us that were there. And this, I don't know how, how old this kid is, I'm guessing early twenties, and he's a corporal in the United States Marine Corps, went over to Afghanistan, had an encounter with an IED, lost both of his legs and mangled his right arm pretty good. And it was just really amazing to hear this young man speaking and thanking us for being there to hear him. And, you know, it just, it really was remarkable, so, you know, just, you know, keep him in your prayers, and also, you know, we did the traditional reading of the names of the veterans that passed away during the last year, and that's, you know, a pretty solemn occasion. You know, before I get into my rant on the crime issue, I want to point out a brighter issue. Graduation time of year, so, you know, if you see one of our high school graduates, give them a pat on the back and say congratulations. If you're feeling a little bit down about Pottstown, take time to watch the junior-senior prom, promenade on PCTV, and you'll see some very fine-looking young men and women. So the future is bright despite what we have to deal with on some of the other issues. And as we head into the summer with the kids out of school, you know, the best way to keep a kid out of trouble is to give them a job. So if you need your grass cut, if you need some handiwork done around the house, you know, find your neighbor kid that's looking for something to do, to do over the summer. Give him or her a couple bucks to do the work. You know, with the exception of the borough manager, I probably have more experience dealing with the crime issue than any other member of council. I spent a lot of years and a lot of hours prosecuting in various levels, in the district attorney's office, the state attorney general's office, and the U.S. Attorney's Office. And, you know, the one thing that I am absolutely convinced of is, you know, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, it's not a poverty issue. Poor people do not commit crimes. Criminals commit crimes. Poverty may play a part in it, but look at the statistics during the Great Depression. We didn't see crime like we see now. It's an attitudinal problem, and, you know, it would be really nice if we could assign a police officer to every block, but we just can't do that. And frankly, it probably wouldn't be that nice, because then, then we'd complain about the infringement on our civil liberties. The best way to deter crime is for citizens to not tolerate crime. So stand up, and I'm not advocating vigilantism, but just stop putting up with it. If you see kids, adults, whatever, acting up, tell them to stop, call the police, get your neighborhoods together. This is, you know, we, we cannot blame the police for the crime problem. The police's job is to do the best they can to deter crime by being present in the community, and then unfortunately, to react to crime, to go out, investigate, catch, and prosecute the people that commit crimes. The way to stop it is to just, as a community, stand up and say, we will not tolerate it. The reason drug dealing occurs in certain neighborhoods is because the people that live there allow it. Call the police, take, take, take pride in your neighborhood, and I urge everybody to do that. And word will get around that Pottstown is not friendly to people. If you witness a crime, if you witness a shooting, my gosh, talk to the police. Don't wait for them to come interview you. Pick up the phone and let them know that you have information. That's how we stop and prevent crime. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just make one more comment to that. Our predominant reporting of crime is theft, which does link to poverty or joblessness, and also domestics is also very high. And so there are statistics for all kinds of outcomes, and that is one, not a mitigating, it's a mitigating factor, but it's not completely the cause. But I just wanted to say that joblessness does lead to increased theft, and theft and domestic violence, and those type of things are often related to financial difficulty.
Counselor Kirkland?
I just wanted to echo the announcement from the Third World Council, or the Joint Council meeting between Third and Seven wards at the Smith Plaza from eleven to twelve-thirty, Saturday, so. Come out, come out and support your work, and I believe a representative from the police department will be there.
Sergeant Markovitch.
So there'll be, you know, an opportunity for you to ask questions, things like that, so come out and support your work. Thank you.
Okay, I thank you. At this time, for the regular meeting on Monday, we will have a presentation by the auditing firm and the master traffic ordinance amendment. So we have executive session, what, two items?
Yes, we have four items, two litigation, one personnel, one item of collective bargaining, and no action will follow this evening.
Okay. So we are adjourned.